Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education to order and ask that you join me this evening in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And actually tonight, I decided I haven't read the mission statement in a long time, so I'm going to read it this evening. I just have to get to it. So, the mission is that the Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. Thanks. Yes, thanks Sue. And thanks for putting up with our bare bones crew tonight. We're missing a few folks. It's summer and everybody's enjoying, enjoying and/or working or traveling for their jobs. So, the first item on our agenda then is our public hearing for the Devonshire demolition project. It's item A on page one, and I would ask that the hearing be open and entertain a motion to do so. Thanks Sue, and a second. So, the hearing is open. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board on the Devonshire demolition project?
Amy? Anybody?
Anybody? Alright then, seeing no one, then I would ask for a motion to close the hearing. Thanks Sue, and a second. Great. And then all those in favor of closing the hearing, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Our hearing is closed. I'm guessing I'm going to have the same response for this next item on our agenda, which is information from individuals and delegations. I'm not going to read my little prepared statement unless there is someone in the audience this evening that wishes to come forward and address the board. And if so, I need your name and address, and I won't go any further. So, alright, then we'll move on from that. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda this evening, and it includes quite a few items, so bear with me. It's minutes of the June 19th, 2017 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, the donation from the community foundation, the Devonshire demolition project, a textbook adoption for the high school language instruction education program, LIEP, the school resource officers agreement with the city of Evansdale, the school resource officers agreement with the city of Waterloo, and the appointment of level-one investigators, and finally, the selection of medicated contracted services. Can I get those items on the table, please? And a second? Thanks Rhonda. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed?
Item C Charlie, G Gov, and K Kilo.
C, G, and did you say K?
Yes.
Great. Anything else? Alright. Then, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, items B, D, E, F, H, I, and J, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to item C on page six, personnel appointments and adjustments.
I move the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
Thanks Lyle, and a second? Thank you, and discussion?
I see we got seemingly quite a few resignations, ten I believe. Is this unusual for this time of year, and how are we going to act quickly enough to replace these people?
Actually, it's not. In fact, as we talked about last month, it's an ongoing fluid process. As, as districts resolve their contracts, then they're able to offer contracts and teachers move around, and some are, may decide at the last minute to, to leave their, their positions. Since our last board meeting, there were, I believe, ten resignations. There may be more. Currently, right now, we have ten jobs posted. The process, as soon as we get a resignation, the building principal submits the resignation. They also submit the requisition for personnel, and it is posted within the next 24 hours, and then it's up for five days, and then we start the interview process. In many instances, principals have been aware that individuals are planning to resign, but they're waiting for a contract from another district before they'll resign from the, the job, the bird in the hand situation. And so, that's why some of our resignations are coming to us pretty late. But in many instances, the building principals have relationships with those teachers. They know that they're planning on resigning, so they're already working on, working with people who might be interested in those positions. They don't formally post them, but they start some conversations.
We've got four special needs teachers here, which we're short of anyway, so these are going to be hires from the outside, I think.
They, they will more than likely be hires from the outside, absolutely. And many of the discussions that building principals are having, we've really coached them on, when you have people in your building that are serving as student teachers, or serving as subs, you watch them, you get in there, if they're, if they're showing promise, you encourage them to choose Waterloo. So, we've been doing that quite a bit, and that has really served us well.
So, overall, how many, how many, do we need to hire yet?
I can't tell honestly. There are ten jobs posted, but I don't know where, where building principals are in the process. And typically, every week, I call the building principals and say, where are you? You know, if a job has come down, have you, are you, have you started the interview process? Certainly, by the end of this week, I will have done that again. I was gone last week and doing fun things, so certainly by the end of this week, I will have made those calls again and be able to give you a little update.
So, the ones from the last meeting are, there's not much carryover in terms of open?
Many times. There are four special ed jobs for sure that are carryover from the last time.
And I'd just like to say, and I, I don't want to, I kind of want to stay in my lane because there's less traffic there, but Bev, if you would just allow me, Waterloo has one of the most diverse school districts in our state, and so we strongly encourage minorities and individuals from underrepresented populations to apply for our jobs. You know, I've been hearing lately about, you know, our, where their positions. I've been going to several forums and things like that. So, we do have several positions that are open. You know, we get those as they come. So, we strongly encourage minorities to please look at the website and to apply for those positions. If you have any questions about anything, I'm sure Bev and her department can, can answer those questions. And if you are currently working for the Waterloo Schools and looking for opportunities to move up, again, please connect with Bev and, and/or Dr. Lindeman and/or your, your building principal, just to get some guidance or some more information. Thank you.
You're alright in that lane. You can stay right there. Absolutely. Lyle, is there anything further? Sue, anything further? Alright. And Bev, if you wouldn't mind, once you've kind of done your check-in, maybe you're dipsticking at the end of the week, if you've got something to let us all know, that'd be great. Appreciate it. Alright, then all those in favor of approving item C, the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to item G, which is the textbook adoption for the high school language instruction education program, the LIEP, which is on page 24. And Lyle, I don't have that recommended. Here we go.
I recommend the Board of Education approve the adoption of National Geographic, Sendgauge, Insight, and Edge, Pearson Longman, Research and Education Association Incorporated, Follett, Young Light, Educate, Tuttle Publishing, and Weezer Education, EEL Curricular Materials, in the amount of $51,201.35 for core and supplemental materials.
Thanks Lyle, and then a second? Thank you Sue, and discussion?
Yeah, I'm just interested in a, is this a new supplemental program? I guess I'm just curious as to how this fits in. First of all, all these are in English, or not?
And we actually have Amy White here today too, so I don't know if you want to come up, and, and I know Dr. McNulty can assist with this as well.
Sure. I think Ms. White will be able to talk about the context of the adoption of the curriculum. But let me point out, very similar to the science approach, this has been a collaborative process with ESC and our, and our high schools, looking at the needs of our students as they enter our high school system. I think one of the things that Ms. White will probably expand upon is that right now, not only do we have students who've been in our ELL program for a number of years, we also have newcomers always entering our community. And, and that's really the, the wonderful thing about our Waterloo community, is that we are a diverse community, accepting of all students, and we have a myriad of languages. And it is exciting that our, our professionals at the high school and our professionals at the ESC are working collaboratively to find the best curriculum to meet the needs of our students. So, Ms. White, could you expand further on the process?
Amy, hang on, there's a, there's a green light.
Little green button, right in the middle, it says push. There you go.
There you go.
I apologize.
No, you're fine.
Hello, so I'm Amy White. I'm an ELL facilitator with the Waterloo Schools, and I think I heard one question being, is this an additional supplemental program that may not have been here in the past? And no, this is not a new program, and so the terms core and supplemental really have to do with the funding streams that support the program materials. So, as we were looking for the most effective and materials that would help accelerate English learning, we had to think about each course that we offer, and which materials would actually be what we consider our core curriculum, and that we would use the ELL weighted funding, general funding, for the core materials. And then, we looked at what needs to come alongside that in order to just give more tools, help maybe more activities and opportunities to communicate for our students. And so, we consider those supplemental coming alongside, and then we're able to use the Title III grant in order to support that funding. And so, you'll see, that's why I've divided it in half and then brought it back together. So, it is a program that's been in place. The reason why this is coming before you now, the last time curriculum was purchased for our LEAP at the high school level was April of 2010, so it's been seven years. And so, we know since that time, the common core has been established. The state also adopted the English Language Proficiency Standards that align to the common core. And we also have had an update in our English Language Proficiency Assessment. They call that the ALPA-21, and it's online, and it's very rigorous. And so, we felt that it would make sense in that timeframe, and with these things that have changed in the meantime, to look into what materials are really going to be most beneficial to our students as they learn their English. And so, I would be willing to answer other questions.
So, you, did you get input from all of the high school teachers and middle school, or it was just basically high school?
Last year, we actually were on the consent agenda about the same time for K-8, and so this is just a 912. K-8 also went with National Geographic Sendgauge, and so they've used it this past year. And so, actually, the high schools teachers had opportunity to talk with the middle school teachers and actually see some of the materials. And so, for the most part, they were looking at what's appropriate for high school. But we know for some of our newcomers, the middle school actually is a better bridge into the English that they need to have access to. So, some of the supplemental materials may be coming from that middle school level, and they've actually been able to use it because the middle school teachers were sharing that with the high school. And we use some of our professional development days as what we would call ELL PLCs. And so, we came together, the high school teachers, myself, the ELL coach, which is someone of Oriano, and we looked through materials. We talked about the courses. We had the teachers go back to their classrooms, investigate, and that's why you see there's more than just one publisher, because we, they found that there's just benefits from many of these different things, which makes sense because they're looking at a variety of courses to support.
And how, I guess, this is a little, not on topic completely, but how did the K-8 feel the success of the program was this first year then?
I think they've been very happy with it. There's an online aspect that every student has a license, and so as our assessment is online, it's been really nice to have some online features that align to the curriculum, and also give access to not only the teachers at home, but to the students at home as they have access, or at the public library. And so, that would be in addition to the actual materials that we have in hand. And I think what's exciting is that systemsness and what happened with the purchase, because when we did that last year, it had been at least seven years for elementary as well. And so, when you have curriculum that's that far behind, teachers begin to create and begin to do their things. And so, we needed to realign and create a system. And I'm very excited about the thread of National Geographic, because that will see that systemness, not only K-8, but K-12, in addition to some of the additional things that they felt were necessary for their classes.
I just have one quick, quick question. In terms of systemness, I love, I love that, that phraseology. Is there parental component with this? Because we know with a lot of our, our newcomer cultural traditions, family is very critical to the learning process, so.
During our meetings, we didn't have parents per se on the, at the meetings with us. So, I would say in that regard, no. And we could increasingly improve with getting the feedback from parents. And a part of that is also in the hiring of additional interpreters, as you see, that has been coming along as well, because our, our group of families are changing, which is very exciting. And so, making sure that we have the right people in place to help that communication.
In terms of the homework though, because you said some of it was online.
Right, the online piece maybe.
Can they work at it at home as well?
Yes, yes. I think it's just the wifi access. And we also have purchased, as a supplemental software, Imagine Learning, which is an online English, kind of like Rosetta Stone, but more appropriate for some of our younger students. And the neat thing about that is the directions come in their first language as they're learning English, and then they take that away as they, as their English grows. So, we're really dabbling in a few different things to see what's going to be the best strategies and maybe interventions to really help our students to meet the rigorous standards that are before them, because we need them to meet their English standards at the same time of meeting the core. And we really need to work very hard to not make a gap in the core while learning English. And that's really, with these standards having coming out, that's new, kind of, because we really have to be jumping right into the core at the same time as learning English. And so, it is a very rigorous learning that we're asking our students to do. So, we do need some tools to help the students.
Well, and I was going, going to say, in terms of learning communities, specifically at the, the secondary level, are we utilizing the interests of some of our high school students who might want to go into special education or ELL education, working with some of our upperclassmen to do English tutoring in some of these learning communities here?
Well, we have talked a little bit.
And that's my last question.
Well, no, thank you. I appreciate the questions. One of our newest groups are French-speaking families from the Congo, and we know that we have French programming going on. And so, we had talked informally about how we might be able to support these newcomers, because we have students who are learning French, and what a great partnership that would be in a mentor role or as a tutor. But we have also been working with the CTE program, talking about how we can make the CTE courses accessible and comprehensible to our English learners, because those are also very rigorous, and they're college and career, you know, focused. And if our students aren't reading on grade level in English, some of the materials are difficult to access. And so, we've been working with Crystal, and we'll continue to work with our next person that will be in that place to know how we can bridge that. And one other thing that's very exciting is we have made an adjustment with one of our staff, Sheila Houston, who last year was a full-time teacher, and now she's picking up a portion of her FTE as a counselor. And I do believe with her expertise in ELL, and she'll still have courses teaching the students, so she'll know the students very well. She'll be able to work as a counselor, and I think she'll be just a wonderful person to help bridge that also. And we're hoping to do like field trips to CTE for some of our ELS that may not really be able to have a concept of what is this. It's in another building, you know, this is not something they're familiar with. So, we've had conversations about doing that as well.
So, are these documents, are we teaching core in the native language at the same time, or teaching?
At this time, it's taught in English. So, we, our program is considered ESL, English as a second language. And so, the core is taught in English with strategies that help the content, the content to be comprehensible. And so, we work a lot with teaching academic vocabulary, with helping students to have opportunities to talk and listen, and then be able then to go into reading. And so, some of these materials will bring content to them, maybe add a readability that might be lower, but at the content that's on grade level. Because like I said, we really need to be hitting the content on grade level right away, and then bringing in scaffolds so that they can be able to interact with it while they're learning English. And so, that's why some of these resources are necessary. They're bringing the content, but at a different readability and with some scaffolds in place. And so, really what our program is, we have some courses that are very specific to teaching English. We have the ELL-1, ELL-2, Intro to ELL for our newcomers, and then we are, we begin into the ELL-English-1, ELL-English-2, where the content is actually the core, but the teacher has the ESL endorsement and is able to bring the strategies alongside the core, so that it's considered both our English and our ELA and ELL credit. Because we do want our students to be able to graduate within the four years. We know that we can't have the ELL courses, you know, push aside the important core that needs to happen at the same time.
So, these are individual classroom groupings that all have some sort of ELL need?
And our focus, one thing that's neat about our systemness is we've been, had the opportunity to hire a few additional teachers, and so that we can really be sure that the correct students are in the correct courses, so that we're, our newcomers can really focus at their level, and that we have our intermediate English and our advanced English maybe in the ELL lit comp, rather than in another ELL course, because we want that acceleration towards core. We do have some sheltered courses also, that are like ELL Econ, ELL C-3 Foundations. And in that case, what it is, is a content teacher. The students are English learners, and we bring in the support of ESL, excuse me, native language interpreters. And our vision would be to have ESL endorsed staff also with that dual certification. And so, as we continue to hire, we're especially looking at people who have English Language Arts and ESL, but we want to bring in, you know, other content as well, ESL with social studies. We have a couple people hired with. It would be lovely to see ESL with math, because we know that there's a lot of academic language that comes with math. And so, we're really continuing to build. We have a lot of momentum. We have some staff with a lot of passion for the students and their families, and so I'm very excited in the direction we're going. We're held to a very high standard, so we have a very exciting job to do. And so, we do hope that these resources are really good tools for our students and our teachers in order to get our students where they need to be, so they can be career and community, or career-ready, college-ready, and to be able to support the community that they live in and stay here, and potentially become some of our staff in the future. That would be wonderful.
So, what is a newcomer?
A newcomer would be a student who comes in generally directly from another country, and they speak little to no English. Newcomers can come in different varieties. We have some newcomers who come, and they are on grade level. Let's say from the Congo, they come to us as a ninth grader. They've had all of their education up to that point, and they are ready to go into ninth grade. They just don't know English. And so, quite often, those students learn English fairly quickly. They say three to five years to be exactly like their English-speaking peers. What's more difficult is when we have the students, especially older students, who come in with gaps in their, their learning. So, they're coming to us at the age of a ninth grader, age of a 10th grader, but they may have only gone through eighth grade, or the school system they were in was maybe rural, and they may not have actually had the access to the content that they, that we would expect as an eighth grader here. And so, those students, we have to really support with content, building them up to grade level, because there's some gaps in addition to learning English. And so, newcomers can be both of those groups. Those who are really ready to go, just tell me the words I need to say, and those who need that access to content and English in order to be ready to go on grade level.
We've got 213 high school. I don't know if there's all 40 languages, but say there's 30.
I would say we have approximately 40 district-wide. At West, it's approximately 13 different languages spoken by their students.
And then you got 55. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, how do you, how do you place these kids? You can't have, even if the 55 have 10 different languages, we don't have classrooms with five kids in, do we?
No, no. And what happens is.
How do you mix those?
We really are unable. We don't have dual language programming where we would teach in their first language at this time. And so, our students come together with their needs, no matter the language that they bring with them. And so, our teachers are teaching in English. We bring alongside interpreters as we are able, and we have word-to-word dictionaries, but we also have strategies that help our students gain access to the academic vocabulary through English, even if we don't have access to the content in their first language.
So, there's certain languages that group together better than others, and you kind of group them by?
I don't know about group together better than others. I think what we look at more so is how much English they've acquired, and then that is helpful to us. It's not necessarily the language they bring with them. What is helpful is knowing how much content knowledge they bring with them, because that helps us know where to start. But we have a screener for English, and so that helps us know when they enter our district, where they're at with their level of English, and that helps place. So, it's not so much their first language. Knowing the first language helps us know to screen them. It helps us know what kinds of translating services we need to make available. But really, we're looking at the English when we go to placing in courses.
So, that's basically individualization, which we do in all of our classrooms, we'd like to think.
So, they're classified as, they're all classified as freshmen, because?
As a newcomer, that would be the case unless they're able to come with a transcript. And so the students who come to us who have, are on grade level with their learnings, but in their first or the country they're coming from, as long as they have transcripts, then they work closely with the counselors and I think with the ESC as well on knowing how they align. And then they're able to come in right at the level that they would fit. But you're right, when we have students who come in as, and only have access to eighth grade or they don't even have anything to show about what they've been learning, they may have gone to work or, you know, there's just been some gaps. And so then they are considered a freshman upon enrollment in order to gain the credit that they need.
So do most of these materials have with them online supplements? I mean, there's a lot of different materials out there. Being purchased looks like one, one of.
Several of them. I would say the National Geographic S engage is probably the one that they will use the most. The Young Light, I don't believe will be an online one. That is more of a, it supplements our strategy of teaching academic vocabulary. And so it's more of a workbook that helps bring the academic vocabulary and align it to the core. And so while we're learning our words, we're talking about them in the context of the core standard. And so these resources have done that and they kind of help the teacher not have to create that themselves.
And I would say that most everything has some technological component to it, even if it's not an online interactive software. I think almost everything has something. I don't, I don't know that we've purchased anything recently that doesn't have something technology, whether it's a CD, you know, something.
Absolutely. And that with this material, the most important thing is interaction. We want our students interacting with their teachers, with themselves, with the, with the content. And so it is very important and when the teachers were looking at it is what can we do to help the students engage and also to really interact with the content, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Anything further then?
All right. Then all those in favor of the selection, I'm sorry, of the textbook adoption for the High School Language Instruction Education Program, the LIEP, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item K, which is on page 70, and this is the selection of the Medicaid contracted services. Lyle, do you want me to read that or you have it?
I'm with the Board of Education, accept the recommendation and approve the addendum from Timberline Billing Services for a 2% increase of claims as presented from July 1, 2017 to July 2, 2018.
Actually, it's June 30, 2018.
June 30, I stand corrected.
Thanks. Sorry. I know, it's hard to read these things, isn't it? All right, in discussion. Thank you for putting it on the table.
Yeah, just, what is, can you give a brief description of what this is?
Well, currently, the arrangement that we have back in, before the July 2015 school year started, we had approved, the board had approved a three-year contract with Timberline to process Medicaid claims. So that would be in effect until June 30 of 18. So this is really an addendum to a current contract. So what the, in a nutshell, what this does is currently, we have as a district, taken the responsibility of identifying the students, getting all the paperwork done, and then submitting it to Timberline, who then does all the federal processing that would get us the Medicaid reimbursement in return. What we have found out that especially in the last couple of years, I shouldn't say especially because it's happened several times, that federal regulations change. And it's very detailed work. It's very subject to each individual student that what services they apply for and their IEP and so on. And when, when we have over 1,600 special education students and all have all different kinds of IEPs and needs and so on, identifying and processing this can be quite cumbersome. This is a service that Timberline has offered, but we haven't taken advantage of in the past, is an additional service of helping us to identify these students, get them, get the paperwork lined up and kind of come alongside rather than just letting us do all of that ourselves. We have found out, just coordinating, looking into what Dubuque is doing this, and again, they're about the same size, same population, and they collect 50% more than we do in Medicaid funds. And they really feel it's because Timberline has come in and assisted with all of that work. So this is the recommendation that we change the last year of the three-year contract to pay an additional 2% of all of the, all of the reimbursements we collect. And then they will help us with all of the students that could be identified and processed for Medicare claims.
So this is the third year, you say?
Yes.
Okay. Could you shed a little more light on, on the bottom of page 70, it says, has increased, Waterloo Schools has increased, with relationship with Timberline, Waterloo Schools has increased billing from a total of $500,000 to $3.9 million.
This is spanning an eight to 10-year time. When I came here 10 years ago, the district was only collecting about $500,000 worth of Medicaid reimbursement. I came from a district a tenth of the size of Waterloo and we were collecting that much. So it was really an issue that there was not attention given to this area. So between many changes in personnel and efforts and, we have raised our Medicaid reimbursement from that $500,000 level annually to close to $4 million a year annually. And we feel like, and, but with that, there's a, Timberline takes the 6% deduction for processing, which would go to eight. And DHS has been different over the years, but it's about 35% that we have to pay them for their part. And I can't explain their function in all of this. So we basically get half of what we claim. So when we're getting 3.9 in Medicaid claims, we collect about $2 million. So we've been hovering about the 1.5 to 2.2 for two or three years now. And we really feel like going to this expanded service, that we expect to see a pretty significant increase in Medicaid reimbursement for 17, 18.
So the extra $80,000 we think will be covered by?
Very, yeah, absolutely. Without a doubt.
And what do we have to do on our part in terms of providing documentation so that Timberline can more thoroughly analyze?
Well, everything that they need is in the IEPs. And they, they then come alongside the special ed staff to make sure they have the right documentation in the IEPs so it fits what Medicaid requires and it intertwines. So it's, it's a coordination of what Timberline can guide us in and what the special ed staff then place in the IEPs to prescribe the right service for the special ed situations.
And are we using, have we developed some sort of programs or technology to extract this information?
Actually, this spring, part of this whole program is they are going to, I think they actually started in four schools in May, that they would electronically process these claims. So Timberline is coming in and, and bringing a electronic version of their processing rather than everything being, what we're doing now is scanning in forms and sending them into Timberline. So a lot more cumbersome and it takes a lot longer to get the money processed and all of that. So this is just kind of an upgrade all the way around.
So they're providing that service?
Yes.
And now the, that early access program they're mentioning, will we just, I guess, do that with a three-year-old preschool or is showing from birth to age three?
I don't think I can answer that.
Okay.
It sounds like a good step forward, especially to get this information on a more electronic basis, so that.
And we've talked about it several times in finance about just that skill level necessary. There are so many changes in the code and the law and just being able to, to actually get back what we, what we deserve is, is a really good thing, so.
If our, our job is to provide all the information and that.
As long as we get it to them, that's great.
Well, and then all the different coding and billing and.
Yeah. It's complicated.
Okay. Good, a good project.
Anything further for Mr. Coughlin? All right. Then all those in favor of the selection of the Medicaid contracted services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to the next item on our agenda. It's item L on page 74, and this is our WESP contract, citing this is the last of our bargaining units and it's nice to have this, gonna be wrapped up here. So the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the proposed agreement with the Waterloo Education Support Personnel for the 2017-2018 school year. Thank you, Sue. And a second? Thanks, Rhonda. And discussion? Dr. Smith, you want to throw in anything?
As you said, we're all pleased to bring this to closure, the, the last of the groups to, to settle. The WESP represents roughly 400 employees. You can see what the percentage increase was in the 25 cent per hour, which is over probably a 10 to 12-year period average.
Okay. Anything further for Dr. Smith? All right. Then all those in favor of approving the WESP contracts, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item M on page 75, and this is the 28E Agreement with the Cedar Falls Community School District. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the 28E Agreement between the Cedar Falls School District and the Waterloo Community Schools for shared high school programming. And a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Rhonda. And I know that Crystal Buzza is here from our professional and technical education side. And you want to tell us just a little bit about this? This is a nice, this is a great thing that we're doing tonight.
It is. This is like the agreement to finally put all the pieces together of what we've been talking about for close to a year now of how can we share some programming that we have for Cedar Falls students and how can Cedar Falls students access, or how can our students access the programming that they have? And this aligns really nicely with the CTE bill that was signed over a year ago by Governor Branstad that's now being carried out through Governor Reynolds Department now. And so really, this coming year, we are anticipating that we'll have 10 Cedar Falls students who will enroll just in the nursing program right now, but we are hoping to expand that into our other programs. And then we have five students that are interested in taking their CAPS engineering program. And so with the, the agreement, you know, what we have is really of allowing us, if we decide to transport students, we have that option of going across the district lines and then making sure that we have open access to using the same type of equipment that we would provide resources if that, if that was something that was needed. And really what we're hoping to is to, you know, find an even swapping of students, I guess, but knowing that if we don't, we'll work out the details really through our business offices when we get to that point.
Now, Crystal, I see currently it's just showing grades 11 and 12.
Correct.
So do you think that will expand to nine and 10 or what is the intent behind just 11 and 12?
For the CAPS program specifically, it is just for 11th and 12th graders. And so I think that's why we're starting with that. Obviously, from our end, I think we would be open to 10th graders attending, but really that has to be something that Cedar Falls would have to be, you know, comfortable with. If you think about how our high schools are, they're a 10-12. We're a 9-12. And so that, you know, their ninth grade is in that junior high level. And so I think some of that of making sure that they feel comfortable in their home high school, there's a lot to be said about that. But certainly there would be that open, not necessarily for our students to attend CAPS because it is 11-12 program.
Is there been talk about more calendar alignment between the two districts?
In fact, actually, for the most part, our start date is the exact same. So that's really, really good. We did a lot of work at looking at calendars and making sure everything was going to work out. Ethan Weichman, who's with the Cedar Falls CAPS program, he's been meeting with what we have, our career coordinators and just talking about, one, how can we get into each other schools a little bit more to talk about the programming so students can be aware of what else there is besides just nursing and CAPS engineering? And then also, we already started talking about, okay, how are we going to handle conferences? How are we going to handle, you know, breaks and all of those details?
So the predetermined allocations, where is that?
What it says specifically is, trying to see where we put that at.
Says tuition expense will not be charged.
Yep. And we, so we know that it's kind of a revolving door of who actually does actually get into the building, who doesn't. So we're not going to know the exact number of students probably until the first days of school to make sure kids can always change their schedule at any point. And so that's one thing that we've been working with Michael's office on, how does that look? The thing that we'll have to figure out is if we do it by period, by time, or if we do it just by, purely by student. Those will be, those underlying details that we'll have to get into. This agreement just allows us to go forward and start those communications of making sure we can do this program.
But, but, but the predetermined allocations, you said five and 10 right now for talking numbers.
Correct.
So are those considered equal allocations?
Technically, they might be pretty close to equal allocations. Our students are there 90 minutes every day, their students are there for two and a half hours every day.
And Crystal, what type of engineering is this? Computer science engineering or?
It's like manufacturing engineering.
Manufacturing engineering, okay. And, and that does have an articulation to Hawkeye and then you and I, correct?
Yep.
And then my question, Crystal, as far as you said, there were 10 nursing students. So we have filled the spots with all Waterloo kids that wanted to be in the program and then these 10 spots were open and were allowed for the Cedar Falls kids?
We knew we wanted to do some type of sharing program, so we certainly had more requests than the 80 spots that we have total. But when we started looking at scheduling, we wouldn't be able to quite get all of those kids in. Now Cedar Falls actually had 40 kids who wanted to take our nursing program. So this will be a good problem, our challenge, where, you know, we might have to look at an evening block of nursing down the road. But the nursing program is, can be challenging in that students have to stay on top of everything and they have required hours that they have to attend. And so that's the one thing we've been telling counselors is we need to get our students a full cohort through a semester before we look at adding a third block in the evening.
So their 10 chosen out of their 40 was done, do you know how they chose us?
That's how they determined how they did that. We have been, because we knew how many requests we had going in and that could have really been an issue and will be, it will be an issue. We have started putting together a rubric that we would happily share with them if they want to do that. But I think at this point, we're going to allow them to decide those students and we will decide our own students of that programming.
And I would just like to, just commentary, I guess. This is, you know, I hope everybody here realizes how monumental this is right now to have, to have a true partnership, a true partnership between Cedar Falls Schools and Waterloo Schools, working smarter, being more efficient with dollars, is a great thing for the Cedar Valley. And to, you know, I think we're approving one 28E agreement for the Waterloo Crew Center and for the CAPS program, but I would be very surprised if there are not more coming down the road. We've had other superintendents come to visit the Waterloo Crew Center and as our programs grow and as our offerings grow, there's no doubt in my mind that we will be able to offer things that may be a small district.
there's no doubt in my mind that we will be able to offer things that maybe a small district would not be able to offer. So, I, you know, I think, I think the same thing would be true for Cedar Falls. I think that they may also have other people coming and wanting to entertain the concept of a twenty-eight E agreement. This is a good thing for taxpayers, this is a good thing for students. And so, you know, we are extremely pleased to bring this before you today. Now, I do think down the road, Crystal and I said, well, you know, we're gonna start with this right now. But we think there could be some tweaking of language in the future. But this is, this is a very, very good thing for really all entities, and we'll work out the kinks as we go. But I think it's very well thought out at this point, and I'm very pleased that we are bringing it before you tonight.
It's an excellent first step, we have to start with the twenty-eight E, and then, as you said, we can tweak and judge and do it right.
And the twenty-eight E has to be renewed each year, correct?
Yep, and that's one thing that we made sure of, if you look at the time, we wanted to make sure that, you know, both parties would review it by May fifteenth. So, it goes, you know, from the traditional school calendar year, but we wanted to make sure that the review happened prior to that and before kids get out of school.
Sure.
So, is this limited to nursing at this point?
No, it's not, that just happened to be the program that they were most, most interested in because they've struggled to get their students into the nursing program, and so they knew they've always had a big need. So, for them, that was a first interest.
Very good, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Crystal.
Thanks.
All right, are there any other questions?
Gonna miss you, Crystal.
Yeah, I can't talk about it, but, 'cause I'm not gonna get choked up right now, but you're gonna be missed, my friend, so. Then, all those in favor of approving the twenty-eight E agreement with the Cedar Falls Community School District, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is the school nursing agreement from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, it's item N on page seventy-seven. And I just have to click down to it here, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the school nursing agreement with the Blackhawk County Health Department.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue, and a second? Thank you, Rhonda, and discussion? Are there any questions about it?
Well, I, a twenty percent increase is pretty big.
Maybe somebody might talk about that.
I was just gonna give some background information before, and please, we will entertain any questions that you might have. So, this, this does represent a twenty percent increase over what we paid last year, but it does not represent a twenty percent increase on the same services. So, we have been meeting with representatives from Blackhawk County Health. Ms. Turner has been there, Mr. Coughlin has been there, I've been there, as well as quite a few members from Blackhawk County Health. And so, we started our conversations, oh my goodness, I don't know when, but it's been a while back, months we've been working on this, and really doing a full-scale review of what is needed and what would be appropriate for the number of students we have and for the health needs of our students. And we were, quite honestly, we were struggling to offer the appropriate services with the staff that we had. And so, in looking at that, we wanted to make a good decision, and so you can see that we did add a full, we added an additional nurse. We had nursing assistants that we increased so that we could have better coverage from the start of the day to the end of the day. There were, and so, there is, there is an increase over what we were paying if all things would've been the same. You know, if we had the, for the services that we had last year that we're paying for again this year, there is an increase there, which we anticipated. But we added staff, we added a little bit of administrative oversight to make sure that we were doing a good job with supporting Medicaid. So, that is, that is all wrapped up into this. This is not, you know, we were hoping for, you know, a three percent increase, I mean, we, two to four, that's what we were kind of thinking. But then, when we really sat down looking at what our students need, this is the contract that we wanted to bring before you.
You, Michael, can you speak to, just for our public to know where the funding will come from for our?
This is almost entirely just general fund budget. There is some nursing services that apply to Medicaid reimbursement. So, even what you did with Timberline tonight may be enhanced, that we would get a little more back through. That we have met with the Blackhawk County nursing staff as we looked at that Timberline change. So, they're very aware of it and are on board to help us with that as well, so. But the majority of it just comes out of the general fund.
Okay, thank you, Rhonda, I interrupted you, excuse me.
I guess one more thing too, and Cora is here as well, and she could answer any questions. But one thing I would tell you is that I think that Cora's department and the, and Blackhawk County Health have really increased their communication back and forth. As health needs change, and in this day and, you know, day and time, I think we would be very, very surprised to know how many times Cora talks with their department, whether it's a particular, you know, if a child has an infection or, you know, something. We have to be very cautious about that, and so, do you wanna make any comments about the communication that you have with them?
Good evening, I definitely support the communication collaboration with the Blackhawk County Health Department. I would say within a week's time, even three or four times a day sometimes, we're in communication on the services needed for students. The response from the Health Department on working on issues with our district has been tremendous. Overall, the team that now works with Waterloo Schools, I can't say enough about. If one nurse is not available, I can easily have cellphone to reach another nurse. I don't feel at the end of the day that there's a service that we were not able to provide or answer any questions that come across for our staff and parents. So, I'm very appreciative of the communication that we've developed with the department.
And I just wanna speak to Cora's, to the awesome job that her and her department are doing because a lot of our newcomer populations are not eligible for Medicaid or Medicare. And so, what I'm so proud of about the Waterloo Community School District and Cora's office is, in terms of public health, communicable diseases, all those types of things, is that the Waterloo Community School District is one of the first places to really identify some of the trends in health issues and health disparities going on in our community. So, a lot of our populations who, for cultural reasons or whatever reasons, do not go and get health assistance. The fact that our school is providing those needed services to our students, which impacts all the other students in the building, I just wanna say thank you, and I'm glad that our communications are improving because this way, we're able to identify some major issues, and then the Blackhawk County Public Health Department is able to allow us to deal with some of those things, so, very critical.
And as Michael stated, the expertise coming from the Blackhawk County Health Department with our Medicaid services will also impact our district in a tremendous way, so it's a good corporation.
It looks like it's about three thousand extra hours if you take fifteen assistants at half hour a day and a full time. So, that's about three thousand hours, so that's fifty to sixty dollars an hour. Seems a little on the high side, but.
Well, it's not just, we're also getting an indirect fee that we've never had before. It's not directly tied to the hours of service given by the staff members. This is, this is a concept that we use as well in a lot of our grants and so forth. We're able to charge part of our, basically, our overhead to it. So, it's not directly just the hours of the nurse and the assistant. So, you would have to pull out about thirty-five thousand dollars out of your calculation that is just helping us, helping, we are helping them cover their overhead. And they are required to charge that to us now because of Blackhawk County policy. And that's being charged to everybody that they do these services with.
So, this is additional fee over last year's service imposed this year to cover their overhead?
We've never paid the indirect before.
So, it is a substantial increase, 'cause we're.
Yep.
So, can this be done internally?
Anything can be done internally.
We did look at that briefly when we had, when, because we've been at this for months, we looked at that. At this point in time, we did not believe that we had the time nor the expertise to be able to roll out an internal service. And so, we did talk with, the director at Blackhawk County Health is excellent. And we were, we really appreciated her conversation and openness and transparency. The conversation, we even talked about whether this contract and this service is a direct match for them on public health. I mean, is what they're doing, is this public health working with a school system? And so, I strongly believe we will have more conversations down the road. Lyle, I think your question is excellent and appropriate. We will have those conversations, but at this point in time, we did not feel that we could, we could hire and secure the staff that we needed to be able to make sure we were keeping our students first. So, I think we'll have those conversations down the road, but that was not a conversation that we wanted to embark upon now.
Without getting into details of, of payment agreements, they can pay their people much more efficiently than we can. So, if they were our employees, it would be a different pay structure because of our association. How their union works and how our union works is two different things. So, we would have a higher cost if we had the same staff under our guidelines. So, it is a more efficient way to do it through them.
It probably might be worthwhile to look at the actual job descriptions, the areas of certification and expertise that are needed, particularly with these nursing assistants, and incorporate them in our program or an extension of our program with Hawkeye or whoever so that there might be graduating students that are able to fill this in the future.
Even, you know, intertwining the C T E program.
Yeah, that's what it is, yeah.
My question is too, though, doesn't this somewhat leave us open to Blackhawk County? The budget that they allow for, I mean, for the County Health Department, like this year, we're offsetting thirty-five thousand, approximately, said if the Blackhawk County budget decides to cut them more, is the district gonna have to keep increasing or offsetting what the shortfalls?
We're gonna have to negotiate every year based on how they approach it, so it may change. But we're gonna have to adapt to that as well.
And what we decided to do, Sue, is to have those conversations earlier on and start them much, much earlier in the year. Much like we did with, with other contracts, we start the conversation sometimes in October or November for the following year, just because that gives you time. If it should come in January, February, and we make a decision that we are going to try to, try to go internal on that, then we would wanna make sure that we had ample time to make that, make that happen.
Okay, sounds good.
And I am glad to hear, Cora, thank you for sharing that, you know, the communication that you have, the extent that you have, and that that's been very positive, that's great to hear. Clearly, if we're gonna sign a contract with someone, we want a great service, and we're getting that, so I appreciate knowing that, so, thank you.
Can I say one last thing, please?
Yes, of course.
Health and wellness is directly tied to learning, and I dropped the mic.
Did you turn your mic off?
Yeah.
Oh, that's all? They're absolutely right.
I want, I want the public to understand why this public health contract and why we're doing this because, you know, I understand some people are saying, you know, why are we having to pay more for these services? But health and wellness is directly tied to teaching and learning, and so it's critical that we provide these services in the schools.
Thanks, Rhonda. All right, anything further? Then, all those in favor of approving the school nursing agreement for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is Exhibit O, and this is some board policy changes. This is the second reading on these, and bear with me, 'cause this is a long list. So, the board, the recommended motion is that the board approve the following policies. Board committees, foreign exchange students, entrance age and requirements, voluntary student transfer program, drug-free school environment, standardized dress code, student directory information, administering medication to students, communicable diseases, students, special health services, high school graduation, site specifications, educational specifications for building and construction plans and specifications. Phew, that's a lot. Thank you, and a second?
So, you beat me to it again, Sue, I was gonna, but I seconded.
Awesome, all right, great, so those are on the table, and Tara Thomas is here this evening for any further questions on those one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen different policies. So, you guys have been busy in your committees.
We have, trying to get those coming up for review or new policies in the, in the hopper for you guys. So, I'm here to entertain any questions or comments, as I know this is the second time they've come before you.
On the voluntary student transfer program, we're not providing any transportation anymore, is that?
V T's?
Do I read this correctly? Page, five oh one point eight.
Five oh one point eight, I'm getting there, hang on.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Yeah, but on the bottom of page ninety.
No, ninety, it's bottom of page ninety. Transportation is, and then there's some, the responsibility of the parent legal guardian.
Tara, do you, or maybe Cora can answer that quicker, who has the answer readily available?
Parents will be encouraged to complete the discretionary transportation application request, which at that time will be reviewed by D E R M. If there's a bus in the area based on space availability, consideration can be given at that time, but that's a consideration through this application process. So, it's not just say, no, we won't do it, it's just if there's space available and if there's a route in existence. And that's the procedure we've been using for the past years.
And there would not be a fee for that.
We've been using, I'm sorry.
And there would not be a fee for that this year because this board took away the fees for paid ridership.
That is correct, but this is the procedure we've been using for some time.
Quite a few years, yeah.
Yeah, this is just for V T, this isn't for involuntary, this is.
Voluntary transfer. That wasn't my impression. 'Cause we normally don't have buses that go in other attendance areas.
I think you're, you're thinking way back to Sina and school choice when it was a requirement. And that was not our policy, that was a federal policy. And as that filtered out or filtered through the system, that, that is a policy that does not exist anymore. Yep, that was not, that was never our policy, that was a federal policy that we did, that we had to follow.
Okay, but even under this discretionary transportation application, I mean, it would, it would be fairly unusual. Not, they do sometimes cross another attendance area in order to get to where they're going. But typically, that discretionary application would not be.
It allows the, it allows a parent an option to request at that time, if there's transportation available, consideration would be given based on space availability. And there is transportation often that cross, depending on the needs of our students and offering special services for them, sometimes there are buses in other areas. There could be for E L L services, special need services, though, there are a few times that we do cross lines.
I think the newcomer program is one that we do not have that at every building, and so, if it's only at one building and there's buses going from other buildings, if there's space available, we will absolutely allow a child to have a, have a spot on that bus.
Yes.
But we're not going to add a route or add a bus for a particular one, just to meet one, to meet the voluntary transfer for one.
I guess my point is, it seems like execution of this, more often than not, there would not be a bus available. But maybe not.
I'm gonna agree that they can make the selection to request, and we'll review.
Yeah. Okay.
It's a choice.
But you're choosing to do the transfer too.
That's what I'm saying, that's what a voluntary transfer is, it's a family's choice.
I think that's the way, that's why the recommendation is as follows. Transportation is the responsibility of the parent, however they can. I think it just makes it cleaner instead of saying transportation is not guaranteed. I think it just makes it cleaner instead of saying transportation is not guaranteed. That leads parents to believe, well, it might be there, but might, you know. It's just clearer.
Okay.
But if you stay in your regular school, you...
Then you'll get it, right? And you might still choose to do that anyway. So. All right, is there anything further for Tara? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the board policy?
Wait, sorry, I have one more thing. For department heads and people, if they would more evenly spread them out, we would not have all these at one time.
All right. Spoken as a policy review. Duly noted. Thank you.
And we haven't heard anything on the dress code revisions? I haven't.
No, and once approved, the communication will go forward to update any one.
So there could be some in the future.
Sure, there could be, but remember the last time we talked about that, we, we did share that we had run that through multiple groups and had sought feedbacks. So we're not anticipating, I actually, I think it's, I think it's probably going to be very well received because it does give slight flexibility on, on certain articles of clothing.
Can I ask a quick question please Tara? And Cora, have we had any major questions or concerns regarding female students headwear? I know that it's part of the exceptions, but I'm wondering if in this policy, if we should just put a caveat under that, the headwear, also see exceptions? I mean, but I don't even know if that's, if that has been an issue for us.
That's a great question. It has not been brought to my attention in terms of a inquiry ever by a family, however, I'll ask Cora that as well because I know she works more closely with, at the level of dress code changes and requests.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, well that's good.
But it's something that we will go back and review just to make sure we have good clarity in the policy.
Okay. All right, anything further? Second time's the charm. All right, then all those in favor of approving the board policy changes as listed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our action items this evening and then that takes us on to our superintendent's report and I'll turn it over to Dr. Lindeman.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks. Just a few things here. I want to just remind the board that earlier this spring, we did, of our strategic plan, we went through the people, which was the P-A achievement and the C for community. We did not this spring tackle, a lot of times we think in school years, and so we did not address the E, which is environment, that which is the E of PACE. But we have prepared, we have groups working right now that they will be bringing back an update to the board on E. They're actually going to split that and so part of the, the group is going to bring their updates on the August, I want to say the 21st or something like that, whatever that, that second board meeting is. And then I believe Cora's department is going to bring the other half, the safety piece. And that, that board meeting happens to be on September 11th, 911. And so we actually thought it was a very appropriate time to bring that before the board and certainly before the public. So that was the, I just wanted to make reference to that in case anybody was wondering, wait a minute, PACE, you left off the E. We did not. We just didn't sneak that in before the end of the school year. So we will bring that back in the fall. Just a, you know, another comment about the, the partnership with Cedar Falls. I had that written down that I wanted to reference that. I did a little bit already, but very, very excited about that happening. And I, I give out, you know, kudos I guess to everybody who works so, so hard between Cedar Falls and Waterloo to, to make things like this happen. We have not had that in the past. The superintendent is Andy Petit and we meet on a very regular basis, sometimes monthly, sometimes more than that, to look at what's going on and how we can be efficient in our, and consistent. And so I think that's a really good thing. I think my third thing is, I wanted to just give out accolades for all of the people in the Cedar Valley who are working so hard on the Cedar Valley Reads Program. I happened to be at the Ball Diamonds the other night when they were giving out free books to any elementary age person. Actually, I think there were middle school kids in there too. They had, they have some, some donors that they had received some money from and they have purchased books and they are giving them out to kids and giving them that pat on the back and that encouragement to read. As part of their stand, they're go, I mean, they're, they're going, every couple days there's an event in the Cedar Valley. I mean, there's at minimum once a week, but, but I looked the other week and there was four, there were four. So there are a lot of events and I actually took a picture, I'm going to just pull it up really quickly, but to remind myself, but there, there's a poster that they have at all of these booths every time and it's, it's called Summer Learning and Summer Learning, Loss, Statistics and Prevention. And the very first thing on there is that two to three hours per week or 20 minutes daily of reading is needed to prevent that summer, that reading loss. And so I know that many of us in here are parents and you think of your own children and you wonder if you have them, you know, reading enough. And I saw, that's just something that is, is, you know, really, really important. And the second thing on there was listed, it's a very well-done poster, but it says two months of reading skills are lost over summer if you do nothing. Two months. And so you think about, you come back in August and really it takes you to October to even recoup what you lost. And so I think that's, that's super important. The equivalent of one month is an overall learning loss if you consider all subjects. So I, I think these are really, really important. Here's the last one, I'll quote. Two-thirds of the achievement gap is attributed to summer learning gap, summer, summer learning loss. Two-thirds of the achievement gap. And so I, it's, it's so important and I, I'm so happy to, to, to see so many people out and about with the, the reading programs this summer and, and the free book giveaway that they've done a couple different times. If, if parents just bring their kids, you can get a free book and you can get ideas and you can get some motivation for your child. Sometimes it's hard as a parent to get them to listen to you. I'm sure everybody else has better luck than I do. But if, if, you know, other parents are there, other adults are there and they're, they're encouraging kids and they seem to leave very, very motivated. So that's, that's just a great thing. I wanted to just mention one thing that's coming right now. Tara and her department are working very hard to redo our website. She mentioned it back when she did her C update, when the community update. Tara, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you have a timeline for when parents might see a change to our website? I know you guys are trying to really hone in on that. Do you know when they would see a change?
I do. Appropriately, we met today to get an update on the process and we are launching the new district website on Wednesday, September 6th.
Okay.
We will be shooting, which means capturing a video, a tutorial where we will walk parents through the changes in a three to five minute summary and we will push that out to parents so that they and their family members who might access our website won't get lost when they go to pay their lunch account or look for something that they've already landed on before that now will be a dead link. So we just appreciate all the staff helping us to streamline the site and cut it down from over 2,000 pages to hopefully a more user-friendly site directed toward families.
Thank you.
So thanks for letting me share that because we're really excited about it.
Well, it, it came into my mind because as many people know that we've had AEA 7 was changed to AEA 267, which has recently changed to Central Rivers. And so with their change of their new website, not only the name changed, but they launched a brand new website and I can't find anything. So it is a well, well-done website. It's excellent, but I really have to search because we are creatures of habit. It is not, it's a, it's a beautiful website and I, it's going to be great once I figure out where everything that I used to know, where, where it is placed. And so I, we would be fools to think that that won't happen to our public as well. Tara's office will be inundated with phone calls of people saying, I can't find this link. And so I think the more that people can kind of get used to that, September 6th is the day that we are going to be launching a brand new website. And so it will be well-done just like the, the website I was referencing a minute ago, but it changes hard and, and new and will cost some people a little bit more time, me included. So, and then my very last thing is just another shout out. As I'm around the community, I just, I, I made this very same comment last year, but I am just, it's just a staggering number of adults who make summer happen for kids. And so when, when kids leave us, you know, in, in whatever it was, June 8th or 9th or whatever it was this year, they do things during the summer, whether it's childcare providers, whether it's coaches at golf or tennis or, or lessons or, my, my children started swimming lessons tonight and so I, I started thinking about that as well. We have summer school going on right now and, and we have high schoolers who are coming. I, I just looked the other day, there were 300 and some kids who were, were taking a course here or there. It takes a lot of people in the community to make that happen and honestly, parents who run their kids all over the place. And so I know we think that, you know, that's just our responsibility, but I, I think it's remiss when we don't remember all of the people who make things happen. And I, and you put that with the summer learning loss, we are very lucky to have so many people who care about our kids. So I think that's the end of my report today.
Here, here. Maybe one of your kids will have one of mine who's teaching, we'll see.
Yeah, you have to have them there, teachers before.
At the pool, so. I don't know who started last time, but I'm going to go over to my right with Lyle tonight for board comments.
Nothing other than reminder, school starts August 24th.
It's on my list, yeah.
And registration was Sunday?
Yeah. Good, there we go, that's off my list now. Okay, Rhonda?
Registration is on the 7th and 8th of August.
Of August, right. School starts the 24th. Okay, Sue?
Well, on a more solemn note, I just wanted to mention to the community that a former board member of ours that served very diligently and advocated for, for all of our students passed away way too young, Pam Miller, who served I think 12 years at least on the board, maybe even longer. Lyle was, served with her, I think Shan Lee did. I was, didn't have that privilege, but she just has been very active in the community. She was a nurse and she worked at the hospitals and then also ended her career at the Cedar Valley Hospice. And she died June 27th in Arizona with, from complications of cancer. And so they will be having a memorial service for her on July 21st at 1:00 PM. And it'll be held at Trinity Lutheran Church, which is at Fourth and South. And donations, they requested to hospice, but I'm sure if, you know, people wanted to donate to schools, she wouldn't be adverse to that either. So, but just, she served our district well and was just a strong advocate for our students. So had a couple kids graduate from the district too. So just wanted to make the community aware of that, that she passed. And then also I read, I watched the other night, a very interesting story on charter schools. And just to know that our district is here to serve each and every student to the best of the ability of each and every student. So, and we as a board adhere to that, our administrators adhere to that and our staff adheres to that and we will not compromise to that.
Just an additional comment, I think Pam was really involved in Books for Kids or one of those programs in which every kid that was born in the hospital got a book if I remember right. So it's consistent with our reading theme.
Yeah. Lot of good passion for our kids she had. I'm going to actually, wore a different hat for just a minute. Angie could not be here this evening, Angela Weekly, and so she asked if I'd read a statement for her. So I'm going to start with her comments and then I'll wrap up at the end. So she says, "I regret that I cannot be in attendance to share this information in person this evening. After careful consideration, I have decided to not seek reelection to the school board. During my time on the board, I have been honored to be part of hiring Dr. Lindeman, who is leading our schools in a positive direction with the PACE model and expanding opportunities for all students at the Waterloo Career Center with new career and technical education options. The most humbling experiences for me are looking out each May into a sea of new graduates and having students come share exciting opportunities. The Say Yes Program, the Robotics Team, the Step Up Program, the Culinary Programs, there's too many to list. I do hope that someone in District Four will decide to take on this awesome challenge and work with one of the most diverse and fair boards in our state." And I know that Angie would welcome discussing this further with any candidate or person who might be interested in running for her seat. That information, she, her contact information is available on our website and you can also contact our board secretary Pam Arndorfer if you're interested in receiving papers or information about that. So I told her I'd read that tonight. So darn, there goes Angela. "I also would like to take this opportunity to announce that I have decided that I will be seeking reelection to the district at large seat." So I've actually picked up my papers and I have them right here in my pocket. So anyway, just wanted to, to put that out there. Just a couple other quick things. This is our only board meeting in July. We do have a, a special session tomorrow. We do our review with Dr. Lindeman in the summer and I'm really looking forward to that. I think all of us are, we always, it's a really nice interface and I look forward to it every year. So that's tomorrow and then we will have, we will be back to our regu, regular schedule in August where we meet twice, but the first meeting on the 14th, we will still be at our 5 o'clock time. So I just want everyone to take note of that. And thanks Lyle for saying that and Rhonda about registration and the first day of school because it's going to be here before we know it. So with that, is there anything further to come before the board? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Sue. I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Rhonda.
I will second.
There you go. All right, then all those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Good night.
I don't think, I don't think our audience increased or decreased. It stayed the same, so I don't know what that says. Our audience didn't increase or decrease, so I guess that's...